I will call this Talon Town Council regular meeting of March 12, 2024 to order. We will do the pledge allegiance and have a moment of silence.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda are proclamation, the presentations. And we do have one tonight for Women's History Month. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our town, state, and nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life in the town, state, and nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the town, state, and nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas women are particularly important to the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions for our town, state, and nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history have been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Katie Stargardt, Chair of the Talon Town Council, on behalf of the Town of Tolland and community at large, am proud to honor and celebrate the contributions of women and do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month, dated at Talon Connecticut this 12th day of March 2024. Thank you to the town staff for putting it up. The next item on our agenda or public hearing of which we have none. Actually true, the next item on our agenda are public petitions, communications, and participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. We do like to go back and forth between the physical room and the virtual room. So if you would like to speak, you can come up to the desk and give us your name and address. And if you're online, you can raise your Zoom hand and press star nine. And we'll start in the room. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
That was a very nice proclamation, Katie. Thank you. My name is Kathy Bach. Tonight I am representing the team from the Talon Historical Society. We are at 52 Talon Green. With me tonight is Mike Pesch. He is the, I guess I should introduce that I'm the president of the society. Mike is the Buildings and Grounds representative from the society. Later in your agenda at eight point two, you'll be discussing a matter involving one of the museums on the green. If you have looked at the lease for that building, you also know that the jail museum is sublets to the Military Museum. And those buildings are part of a consortium of historic and cultural buildings on the green that for several decades have been part of the culture of the green. And that that culture has been something that the town council over those decades has sort of been very interested in seeing cultivated. So the jail museum, the courthouse museum, the military museum, the French-Canadian Research Library, the Art Center, all have worked. Sometimes we've been more active, sometimes cost has prevented some of the activities like the Victorian Lantern Tour from being able to be as effective in town. But we have always worked together to be able to help the town project the image that you have had for the last three decades that I'm aware of here. I hope that you'll remember that. Also, Mike and I are here tonight so that when you get to eight point two on your agenda, if you have questions, since we have been stewards of that buildings that we have control of and have made significant financial investments in those buildings and of late as well outside on those buildings. And we represent some of the other museums who have made also significant investments inside their buildings. We hope that you will consider that as you look at the plans. We know it's an expensive project. We also have had, some of our people have had significant experience in restoration work on several of the buildings on the green and in town, as well as working with private individuals in town. We know how to bring costs down. We know how to work with vendors. We know how to change work scopes and reduce the size of them. We have done the cupola here on the courthouse museum. Some of us have worked with the Congregational Church on their steeple. We've worked at the Benton Homestead. So we do have some experience working with these commercial vendors. So we hope you'll work with us or we can work with you. I guess this is the town building because again, we have a significant investment in that building. I know you had some questions.
Two minutes.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
So talk to us. Thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak? You can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. Suzie Lusick?
Hi there, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? I'm sorry, anyone?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, you're very, you're way off in the distance. I apologize, but I'll go ahead. Susan Lusick Hughes, 95 Talon Green. I'm also the Chair of the Talon People Commission on People with Disabilities. Good evening. And tonight you're going to be discussing an expense of over a half a million dollars for an exterior renovation project on the historic town property known as Talon Jail. Last meeting, you heard the Chair of the Historic District Commission bring up wants and needs, and I questioned where this project fits. She also inferred then that the current ADA sidewalk project on the Talon Green that will cost less than this and will make the green accessible to everyone in town is a want and not a need. A project that, as I'm sure you're all aware, is tied up in a lawsuit by the current management of the Talon Jail, as well as members of the Historic District Commission and others. I just want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that the ADA, that ADA compliance is not a want, it's a federal law. So looking at the renovations to this building, they all look great. They improve safe accessibility from the outside in, that's awesome. The building certainly needs work, so fixing it up using as much state grant money as possible, even better. Hopefully no one will sue you to stop it. However, accessibility and ADA compliance don't just cover getting into the building. I'll call your attention to what's inside. Is it, is it accessible, ADA accessible inside? How wide are the aisles and the doorways? Can a wheelchair or a scooter safely turn around in the aisles? Is there a safe evacuation route if there are multiple wheelchairs inside? Is there a handicapped accessible restroom? Can people in wheelchairs, walkers, and scooters access all there is to experience inside this public building? And if not, are there alternative devices that offer these experiences if a person cannot get up the stairs or down the stairs for a school or public program? As Chair of the Commission on People with Disabilities, our charge is to advise the town council on issues relevant to our citizens with disabilities. As you consider this project, please also ensure accessibility throughout the entire building, not just to get inside. And please remember that the ADA, that ADA compliance is not a want, it's a federal law, and it's also the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to come in?
Hi, Georgia Goldsmith, 21 Marlburg Lane, I2 Support ADA Compliance for the Talon Green. And I would also like to see our schools fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Zoom, KHB.
Howdy, Kate Howard Bender, 103 Goose Lane. I would have put on my video, but it's disabled, which is fine. I just wanted to all, first of all, say yes, yay for ADA. We want, we want sidewalks, let's go. But of always, of always concern for me is to fully fund the Board of Ed budget in accordance with what the Board of Ed put through. I think it was four, four point eight four, assuming a couple of expenses taken care of by the town council. So I know you all know what I'm talking about. So I'm just going to ask that you don't cut the Board of Ed budget anymore. Because it's just hurting our kids and hurting our community, and we all deserve better than that. All right, friends, I'm sure I'm not the only one that thinks that way. Be well.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Don Laughin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Hello, Town Council. Tonight I'm going to express my disappointment at the Town Council and for this drawn out process regarding my property yet again. For reference, I've been coming to these Town Council meetings consistently for the last six months. I've been working with the town on this issue of my property for well over five years, and I've been subjected to this water contamination issue at my house that the town caused for eight years. Over the years, this topic has always been on my mind, sometimes at the back of it, but it is always a nagging and persistent issue, which is detracted, detracted from my life. While times like now are going fairly well, and I haven't had any water-related issues other than not being able to drink it, I am always nervous about the day I go to turn on the water, and I have none, for fear my well pump has succumbed to my corrosive water or that I come home to a flood, both of which I have experienced in my time at my property. This is not a great way to live. Rather than be able to attend Town Council meetings and give public comment or even support for the variety of things the Town of Talon has been doing, I'm instead consumed by this one singular issue because it is so impactful and because it is unresolved. I would love to comment on the sidewalks on the green, or give praise for the fire department Santa around the holidays, or comment how I would appreciate if the Public Works guys could be a bit more mindful of lawns when plowing roads. But I don't do that because you have forced me into this corner where this is the only thing that I can talk about, my water. I cannot take advantage of the adult league volleyball on Tuesday night in Talon. Recently, I should have been at a rally at the Capitol one of these past Tuesdays fighting for funding for our higher education system, specifically Yukon, where I work and where I receive my paycheck, because our governor loves to pontificate about fiscal guardrails to the extent of hurting higher education. But instead, I am here, time and time again, fighting over this problem because it's an even larger issue than my paycheck, if you can believe that. What is it going to take? When will things be done? I've asked for a project overview and timeline as to when things take place, and I, and here we are with no news and no updates. I hear crickets from the council. It's been well over a month since the last communication. I cannot begin to express how disappointed I am in this town. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room?
Mike Pesch for 79 Sugar Hill Road. I'd just like to address the questions that Susan had about ADA compliance for the jailhouse. And we are compliant with all those requirements.
On Zoom, Jamie Davis?
Jamie? Finally, I couldn't unmute myself before. Jamie Davis, 23 Johnson Road. And I am just calling in to say, please support the schools and the budget. We've had, we've lost a lot of programs. I know we've gained programs, but it's not, not the same. I have two kids in school, so I, I just, you know, anybody who questions at the school needs funding, just sit in a fifth grade class. That's, that's all I can say for that. Also, you know, support ADA sidewalks on the green. And also, I think we really ought to look into solar requirements on the green in the historical district because that is part of, you know, they are required to be approved unless it's, you know, alters the aesthetic, and that's extremely subjective. And truly, our environment is so much more important than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Anyone else on Zoom? All right.
No, that's, that's my end.
If we don't have anyone else to speak right now, we'll move on to agenda item number six, which is public hearing items, which we have none. And then we move to reports of work of the commissions responsible for the Capitol. Want to start calling with ARPA?
Yeah, sure, thanks, Katie. So a couple of weeks ago, Tom Andrew Foley and I visited Station 340 to see the progress, which is pretty exciting to see things happen in there. The station is fully enclosed now with the, you call it, Brian, the
Panels?
Panels, they keep panels in the interior. All the studs are up, drains and windows, they're waiting for the garage doors for the bays, that way they need those doors so they can shut them, so they can sheep rock and have the right temperature. And then we did postpone our regular meeting coming up, just for the sole purpose of awaiting on a change order. It's going to be scheduled for a special meeting at the end of the month. That way Megan has enough time, and we will not be canceling, you matter what, it's just a postponement on that one. And I think that's really it, unless I missed anything, Megan or Brian, no.
In regards to ARPA, the grader came in at significant savings. We'll have some stuff coming back in. I think you saw something for Bruce in regards to the longevity of the rink. And you might see something in regards to, and this is pennies compared to anything else, an air raider for the crystal or for Crandall's Pond to make the water quality better and all the stuff we're looking at. But good job that Scott saving us probably 40 grand or so on the, the grader. We even have looked at it yesterday, so.
Excellent. Any questions?
I think I picked up the auction down in Florida?
Yeah, it's, and it's here in Windsor, Lons. And then it'll be retooled. They'll go through all the lines and the pumps. The AC needs to be charged, it's the only thing that was wrong with it, but the cabins enclosed now.
Am I?
Yeah, probably nice. And they'll, they'll give it the once-over, the hornet down there will go through everything.
How old is?
I didn't get that, I'm sorry, Joe.
I had a question there. We, we had an email come in from a member of the community asking about interest income on ARPA. Do we have an answer yet on what's going on with interest income on the ARPA fund? We responded that there's no interest. And then I believe Brian had responded.
Yeah.
Or there's just not enough time to get, start figuring for another project, but no budget.
No, there's no ARPA, there's no interest on the ARPA. I don't know how the process works, the draw system, or whatever, but there's no interest. Megan, would you know?
That's a question for Lisa.
Okay.
Lisa's on it.
Oh, she is on.
I thought it was on, eh?
Yep, Lisa, you wanted to talk about the interest on ARPA? Well, I think there are. It doesn't, there's no interest collected on it.
Okay. I did send a follow-up question to ask why not, as it's an allowed spending category per the federal regulations. So, I mean, we've been holding, what, like as much as $4 million in that account, and yet we didn't earn any interest. I was interested to find out why.
I would say most of that was before my time, but I, I'll text Lisa.
Okay, even if we could get an answer for the next meeting.
Lisa, are you there? Oh, she's going in, okay.
Hi there, sorry, I have a runny nose, so I was trying not to show. Back when, when ARPA started, I think we were under the impression that we could not invest the federal funds and earn interest. We're thinking it was in the same way. So basically what happens is part of our pool cash, so the fund itself is not earning any interest directly, but in our pool cash account, it, the general fund benefits from any cash that's floating in there that can be invested. So if there hasn't, if there was some that was not invested, then it would just, just be in the float of the pool cash. So the fund did not directly earn any interest, but if there was anything invested at all when we moved, the way we invest full cash is if, if there's some available, we'll invest it overnight, things like that. But it's not like we designate the money right from that fund to the certificates or any type of overnight investments. Does that help respond to what you're looking at?
Yes, thank you. I, thank you for that explanation. It's, I know that there were a lot of changes from the federal government on use, procedures and use of these funds. So it's unfortunate that we didn't know from the beginning that we could have been earning interest. So thank you for that explanation.
Well, like I said, it, there may have been some interest earned, but the fund didn't get it. It would have gone to the general fund if they asked.
Okay, thank you. The Road Salt Task Force did meet. No, I think we met before the last meeting. So we have no updates at this point.
It's in a meeting next week, that will be great.
That's a different meeting.
Got it.
Yeah, okay. We do have something regarding the charge of the task force later on in our agenda tonight. Any questions? Okay, so we'll move on to reports of Town Council liaisons. Do you want to?
So the Agriculture Commission met on the fourth, and it's a pretty quick meeting, but they talked about, there's a program that we have that they're looking to get a couple more farms signed up for where it's these vouchers, and don't quote in a term on, it's a coupon that basically is handed out to families that qualify the town, and they can use these coupons to buy produce at these, at these farmers markets, which is a great program. And then the farmers will match the coupon so that basically these people can get double benefit, and the farmers get reimbursed through the town fund for people that's designated for this. So they're looking to get a couple more farmers on board for that, to get a couple more showing up at the market. They're working on the market website, there's a little bit of work left to go to that, but they want, they want farmers to add their, their links to their sites so they can go on to the market website and then go directly to the farmers' websites. And we're looking for sponsors as well because we don't charge farmers for participation in the program. So we're looking for funding, and that would help some of the things, the trumpet bands at the, at the market too, which would be great. So we need some funding. And then they're also looking for some, some students. They, they put, they put a query out to Talon High School to see if any students wanted to act as liaisons towards, towards the organization. And I think you can earn your hours, and students require to have their own number of hours, and they haven't gotten anybody from the high school to volunteer yet. So now they're reaching to, they're reaching out to Rockville, see if somebody from Rockville might want to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And lastly, what was one? Oh, there's a Campbell farm that Talon owns, and the farmer that leases it is looking to possibly have a well on their property so they can use the well to water their crops. So there's discussions. And that's it.
Thank you. Do you have any?
Yeah, I do, Katie, thank you. So the Recreation Advisory Meeting met last night, which is really nice. So they're just talking about summer programming is ready to go. The program registration for spring/summer starts April 1st. So Jen Buckler, I know you were highly interested in that. So April 1st, mark your calendar. They're expecting large turnout again, which is great. The ice rink has been taken down for the season. Big kudos out to the Public Works Department for doing a great job. Amber and Ryan going out there, I think you measured how deep it was up there too. Field maintenance scheduled was, was discussed as well. And let's see. Yeah, so that stuff's, I believe, going to be going to Scott for, at the Public Works Department. Other than that, they're always a great group to work with, and I always, Bruce is just a wonderful director there.
And calling the programs that the rent department are going to continue to be half operate for the ARPA.
Thank you for pointing that out, Chris. Yeah, half, and I believe even the winter, there'll be, be some, yeah.
Great.
And like Bruce mentioned at the last council meeting, there's more program and that's being offered. But yeah, that's really, really it.
Yeah, I had the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last night. It wasn't too heavy of an agenda. The big thing they talked about is making some changes regarding large lot accessory structures. So this is talking about like large properties of like 10 plus acres. They talked about maybe going down to as small as five and then allowing for larger structures that are currently now allowed under the regulations. So if I'm not mistaken, right now it's like has to do with the square footage of your house and things, unless you're like a farm, and then you can, then there's different regulations. So this would allow some large lots to build larger structures without needing to qualify as a farmer. So they're just considering that, no changes have been made at this point, but they started the discussion last night. That's about it.
Thank you. Did you also have land acquisition invited?
No, I did, you're right. I'm sorry, I did, I forgot about it. Yes, thank you. Brian?
Sure. Torrey Road, off of Torrey, over that way is some land that's for sale. They wanted, they would prefer selling it to the town, and we're looking at acquiring it. There's, there's two lots, one's a very large lot, which would be at a pretty good cost, the other one's a smaller building lot. I'm, much of us are, are bluehorned in that, we're not overly interested in not doing it, we're not overly interested in doing it either, we just want to explore it further. There's, there's some, some quirkiness to it, but obviously some great potential. Should we look to move that way? But we need to be careful, Jacob, I believe is on it as well, was Jacob on that one?
I know.
How was you?
Yeah, I did, Jen.
Yeah. So just something we're, we're tiptoeing through, and I went out and looked at it over the weekend. It's beautiful land, and then the, from the lot that they're, a lot that actually butts toward Torrey Road, it's the more expensive one that you can essentially develop or put a house on. So it's just something that really for us to weigh and look at the options.
And it butts a conservation.
Yeah. Oh, it would, yes, and it would build on, I believe, loose conservation, so it would add acreage and potential trails, and I didn't go farther than the building lot. I just ran through the ticket. I will. That's it. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Jen, did you have any meetings?
I only had land acquisition, and I wasn't able to make that minute meeting, but it seems to have been fully covered.
Thank you. I had was Prague meeting, so I'm going to let the agenda item regarding Prague cover that one. Any questions? I know, yeah. Help the hook. Any questions for anybody?
Just curiosity, what, what brought up the reason for the potential zoning change for the larger building? I don't know if this was the impetus, but the week prior, I think there was an applicant who was trying to get permission to build a 35-foot tall structure, would have exceeded the height limitations, and there were some questions about whether he was actually a farm, and so like what, or whether, you know, they, they were just trying to
was actually a farm. And so like what or whether, you know, they they were just trying to, I think it sort of spun off from that, like should to be like a little bit more upfront about the uses and not try to like shoehorn it into a, but I I know that before um they would do anything, there would be a public hearing on it and all that. So this is, I think, early stages, but yeah.
Someone to build a big, beautiful barn that wouldn't be used for bartering.
Right.
Uh or for events, not public events, but you know, that has space for family and friends. What's that?
Divine Barney.
Yes. So um and you know, under the agricultural um zoning rules and really, like you say, shoehorned it into an ag thing. It's not an ag thing. So let's look at it and make sure we can do it right.
Okay.
You know, a good opportunity for everybody. So.
Thank you.
As they would have, sorry, they would have like certain setbacks and all that from property lines. And we're talking about relatively large property. So that's all the stuff that they're sort of in discussion about. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. So we will move on then to new business. Eight point one is a presentation and discussion with Matt Hart, who's the Executive Director of the Capital Region Council of Governments or CROG, um of which we are a member. So please come on up.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Council Members, Mr. Town Manager, and Rob Eloise, our Director of Transportation Planning, has joined me here this evening.
Right. And I do, I I was told that I have to say uh for the record, you do have a presentation you guys are gonna be making, but we can't make that work on Zoom tonight, unfortunately. So for everyone who's watching, that presentation will be in the meeting minutes uh for reference later.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I know if we want to bring it up on on screen and we'll work through it as expeditiously as we can so we can get to your good questions and comments.
Keep in mind I'm having fun with my mouse here today. This is not fun.
You're doing great, Brian.
Thank you.
We got this town manager thing down now.
I don't know about that. Sarah, is it down the bottom?
Yeah.
This one? Awesome.
Excellent. So I uh I was your neighbor up in Mansfield for several years, by the way. So great to be, great to be back here. So we want to talk about tonight, just an overview of our organization, a little bit about our role, some of the benefits that we see for your community in particular, and then to take your good questions and any comments you may have. Next slide, please. So here's a a snapshot of all the councils of governments across the state. And you see capital region here in uh in the middle. And you are on our eastern boundary. And then we go west over to Soullington and north to Massachusetts in both directions. Thirty-eight municipalities, residential population, just a million people. So good size by Connecticut standards. So what do we do? What do councils of governments do? Oftentimes, people think of us as a county. We're not a county, county government. You know, we rarely provide a framework for towns to get together, talk about mutual interests. We also provide a set of programs and services to you, which we will describe. And then we can also hold a couple of federal designations. One of, one that we have held for a long time now is that of a Metropolitan Planning Organization or the MPO. And in that role, we administer federal transportation funding. And Rob will talk about that uh when we get to that part in the presentation. And then a relatively new designation we just received this year is that of an Economic Development District in which we administer federal economic development funds for regional initiatives. Next slide, please. So here's, here's our mission statement. I already talked about the stuff on the left-hand side, and I'm not gonna read it word for word. But I would emphasize that we lead as a catalyst to enhance the quality of life, vibrancy and vitality here in our region. We provide our members with a set of services. We serve as the region's MPO. And we're a strong advocate. We're a strong advocate for our towns and the region overall. Next slide, please. So talking a little bit about our governance structure. So our policy board is equivalent to the town council in many ways. That's our primary governing body. And it's comprised of forty-one members at present. Each of the thirty-eight towns, the chief elected officials automatically has a seat. And then the city of Hartford has three additional seats. So that's how we get to forty-one. And then each of our primary members, such as your council chair, has the ability to designate an alternate. And most of our council manager communities will designate the town manager to serve as the alternate member on the board, as you've done here with uh with Mr. Foley. The Transportation Committee is very active. They advise MPO. And Rob will talk about their work. If you've got Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Lafferty serving uh on that committee. Our Regional Planning Commission, they, they um they take up certain applications that uh that come to commission. Usually it's for projects within a certain proximity of a municipal boundary. They also re- review our regional plan of conservation development and a couple of related matters. So you've got uh, is it Ms. Getz? Am I pronouncing that correctly? As your representative there. Our Municipal Services Committee, which reviews potential new programs and services for the organization. Your town manager, Mr. Foley, and and Megan are active members there. It's great to have them. And then last but certainly not least, our Capital Region Emergency Planning Council, which looks at public safety, emergency management matters. You've got Chief Lightell. So we have four departments here. Transportation Planning, which we'll talk about. Regional Planning and Development, Municipal Services, and Public Safety and Homeland Security. Next slide, please. So in the area of municipal services, we've long had this regional, um actually it's larger than the region. We've had this Purchasing Council, which serves over a hundred of Connecticut's one hundred and sixty-nine municipalities. And the Purchasing Council will go out and competitively bid commodities as well as services. And then towns can utilize a vendor working off of our list. And we do some very basic stuff like grass seed and fuel, and then some more complex things as well, such as firehouse software. So we've had that in place for generations down, and they do a very nice job. We staff the municipal, this department staffs the Municipal Services Committee, our Human Services Committee as well, which gets together quarterly. We've got a GIS and a data center. The data center is is under some development, which we're excited about. We've been collaborating with SIFSEC, the Connecticut Foundation Indemnity Solutions Company. We, we actually helped get it off the ground. We were very instrumental in that regard. And then the testing, the testing works through us, and we handle the reimbursement for residents that are having their foundations tested. We actually have a meeting this week with the top ten towns, top ten in terms of their impact from the crumbling foundations crisis, year one of them. And we're gonna be talking about the impact to local grant lists. And then we engage in in legislative advocacy. Each and every year, we put together a legislative program of issues that are region that we present to the General Assembly, and we track over the course of the session. A couple of key initiatives that we have underway, and I'll ask Rob to elaborate on this in his presentation. We spent a lot of time and effort over the past couple of years on federal funding opportunities and trying to help our towns prepare good competitive applications for those funding sources. We've got a waste management study that we recently completed, and we reestablished our regional solid waste authority to uh to come up with some good long-term solutions on the waste management front for our communities. Next slide, please. So that's municipal services. Now let's talk about regional planning and development. And this department really supports our land use and our economic development community. Think about your town planners, your local economic development professionals. So we've got a Regional Planning Commission, which I mentioned at the beginning. We have this uh planning and development forum where periodically we'll get the uh town planners and economic development professionals from across the region together, talk about key items of of interest. We've been promoting transit-oriented development for several years now. We've got a brownfields remediation program, natural hazards mitigation, some key initiatives we have underway. We're updating our regional plan of conservation development. You have a local plan. We have a regional plan. The state has its plan. And there are a variety of plans here, here in our state. And ideally, they're all connected and uh and linked. Economic development, I mentioned, we recently received this Economic Development District designation. We want to make sure we're taking full advantage of that. Regional housing. Housing is a critical issue for our region, the state and the nation as a whole. So in the coming year, we're gonna be embarking upon a strategy where we want to look at supply and demand issues and uh help identify a set of solutions for our region, looking at the wide range of of housing needs. And this will be a strategy with a set of recommended solutions, not a one-size-fits-all model. I heard a uh stormwater, heard a reference during a public comment. Not sure if it relates to stormwater at all. But stormwater management is an issue for our region too. We've got our MDC towns in the greater Hartford proximity as well as some of our more rural communities like yours. And uh we want to look at how we can a- address that more effectively as a region. Next slide, please. So I'm now gonna turn to Rob to talk about transportation planning, and then I'll wrap up with public safety and homeland security. Rob?
Thanks, Rob Eloise, Director of Transportation for CROG. Uh happy to be here. Uh I think the two main things, if I had to boil it down, that we do in transportation planning is plan for the, plan to address the needs of the transportation system in the region and then help fund those needs. Um Matt mentioned that we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization. That's a federal designation for the region. In that role, that, in that role, we give municipalities the say in how federal funds are expended. So in order for uh federal funds to be expended through DOT, not only does DOT have to sign off on those funds, but our committee has to sign off on those funds. So any project that uses a dime of federal funding gets the okay from DOT and the okay from our policy board. And usually the policy board takes a lead from our transportation committee. Um there's various uh federal planning documents that we have to produce. One being a tip, which is a grand list of any project that uses a dime of federal funding. Um and uh there's various federal uh federal and state uh funding sources that we oversee in the region and allocate to municipalities through solicitations. So these uh funding sources uh require a couple of things to note. They require a match usually, and the amount about twenty percent. And uh usually they're competitive solicitations. So all of it will have a solicitation through our transportation committee. Through going through that, you'll know about the transfer, about the solicitation, the rules of the game, and any town can submit an application. And typically, it's a competitive uh process through the rules of the transportation committee as to which projects are selected to move forward in advance. A couple of projects in town that have advanced, one is Old Cat Hole Road, which I received lots of funding through CROG. Another is right out here in front, which almost ten years ago got funded, uh Route one ninety-five and seventy-four uh along uh this strip here and some traffic calming and a change to the intersection uh uh stop control. Uh so those are just a couple of examples. Um we also have planning studies. Sometimes these projects are initiated through planning studies, as was Route one nine, one ninety-five. There was a planning study done uh about twelve years ago or so that was completed. And then uh that project was was done almost uh ten years ago. But that's not the only avenue. You can have town uh staff come up with plans and submit applications through us to get funded. A few initiatives we have coming up are uh assessing the DOT's Greater Hartford Mobility Study. You might have read in the paper. That's a huge initiative, uh potentially up to over ten billion dollars worth of improvements for the Greater Hartford area for rail and the highways and uh bike and ped and 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 bus service. Um we're breaking down, that just got dropped uh in December, and we've been breaking that down for our committees. And we continue to, we look to to have a resolution soon of support for that project. We also have a couple more local studies going on just for the region. Uh a regional bike, ped priority network study is about to kick off. We're about to go out to get a consultant for that. And a regional warehousing study to look at transportation, warehouse siting, what kind of land use uh and zoning uh towns can um, you know, tools towns can uh apply uh to address uh recent uh uptick in warehousing activity. So I'll turn it back to Matt.
Thank you, Rob. Next slide, please. So public safety and homeland security, this is our our fourth of our four departments here. And I know the town manager was very active here in his, his prior roles. But this uh department staffs the Capital Region Emergency Planning Council. They were very active during the pandemic, as an example, with PPE distribution and uh and other tasks. We also staff the Capital Region Chiefs of Police Association and our Capital Region Citizen Citizen Corps. Much of the work in this area is around administering federal and state grants for public safety, emergency management, and public health. And much of that is for training and equipment and various exercises. And we are gonna be offering this class next month on April twenty-sixth. It's a FEMA four oh two, four hundred and two level class through the National Incident Management System or NIMs. It's an overview. It's a condensed overview, about two hours, designed for senior officials. And we're really targeting our policy board members. So Council Chair Katie and Town Manager, you are certainly welcome to attend if if you're available. Next slide, please. Rob already mentioned uh this lots of project you received a couple of years ago. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot. This is an annual benefit statement. And um as you can see, wha- what we calculated as your return on investment, just for this one year, I believe it was approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand, excuse me, on dues of less than twenty thousand. If you examine this over a three to five-year period, normally that return is much greater, especially if you have a lots of project within that timeframe. And then lastly, this is our social media campaign, where we're seeking to highlight our work as well as your work, and really looking to promote our thirty-eight member municipalities. You know, we're, we're here to serve you. You know, we, we don't serve the the residents as directly. Our job is to assist you in serving your residents and and taxpayers. So appreciate your time this evening and happy to take any questions or suggestions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Go ahead, Chris.
Um just two quick ones. Uh I think you mentioned legislative advocacy that you all do. Uh when we had our um state delegation in, I had raised this, but anything that you guys can do to help try to get as much state support as we can for contaminated wells would would definitely be uh appreciated. Um sort of in line with, I I know you've done work with the uh Corby Foundation. So I think that would be something that would be great. That's something CROG can help with. I don't know, you know, what the, what the other towns in your region are facing with that. That's certainly something that would be important for us. Um and then the other thing, I heard you mention um housing needs that I do know on the liaison to planning and zoning. And it's definitely come up, talking about the challenges that like more rural communities like us face with like affordable housing and things of that nature. Um and so uh certainly like I would love to work with you or planning zoning to see if there's anything that we can do to sort of um get on the same page, and I think so. Thank you.
Great. If I can just comment on both of those. So contaminated wells, PFAS and other substances, that is an item under our legislative program.
Okay.
So we are advocating for more funding there. It's certainly important to a variety of our towns, including the town of Manchester. They've been very hopeful in that regard. So that's a key element. And then secondly, on uh the regional housing strategy that we'll be preparing, and we want to look at housing needs more broadly, certainly affordable, but also workforce housing. So I I think that the demand pressures we're experiencing really span income levels at this point. And you're right, more rural communities have a unique set of of challenges. So we'll be establishing a a committee uh to help support that project, and uh we'll certainly reach out to your community. And if you're interested, we'd be, we'd be happy to have you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Respect to Chris's comment, because I was gonna comment as well. Um and you mentioned that there's some, some push by organization for federal legislation to help fund it or to support in some way for the water and salt water task, and salt water issues. So what's the status of that? And when can we expect any kind of potential results or or assistance in that regard?
On the contaminated wells issue? So the state has been working on it for some years now, and they they have provided uh they, they have provided funding. It's administered through the State Department of Public Health, where they provide grants to municipalities to assist with remediating private wells in addition to those. In addition to those that are that are publicly owned. So that there is a process administered by DPH, I'd be happy to to provide that to to. And most of that is state funding, I believe. As of this point.
Yeah, actually. So what's the progress at the federal level? Or is there anything going on?
So federal level, there's the Clean Water Fund, which is passed through and again managed by the DPH here in here in Connecticut. So that's, that's been funded, I think, at decent levels, would have liked to have seen higher levels of funding under the bipartisan infrastructure law. And there's certainly an increasing recognition nationwide. About the dangers posed by PFAS and and other contaminants, including certain types of road salt that we've been applying for at least a decade now. So the, the, I think the knowledge is expanding, there's some level of funding. Most of that, again, is a pass through that the state agency, DPH, will administer.
Any question? Jen, you have any question?
No, I have no question, thank you.
What about, so I have a follow up question on contaminated wells. In town are. We have a number of wells that are have salt contamination rather than PFAS, so we are sort of on that end of the spectrum. I know that DEEP is moving to release base regulations. And understand that that might have some impact on well contamination, are you guys following that as well?
To some extent, yes. Yeah, because we've got a regulatory component of our legislative agenda as well.
Okay.
So we'll certainly key in on that.
We might tap into you on things with that, I know the the regulation changes. Is going to span a year, and they've already started, so that's good, but I do think we need to watch how that regulation change impacts the town. You highlighted some of the success stories that the town has had working with your organization. I know from my limited involvement just in the last few months, I think there's a lot. There's a lot more nuanced stories because you guys are. You take really a front footed approach on a lot of local issues that kind of impact the entire. Region as opposed to just one town at a time. But the success story of Old Cat Hole Road, for example, is a really good one in town. That road was widened and we put sidelines in mostly because that's where students run. When they're doing cross country and there's a lot of foot traffic on that road. Are there, are there any other grants or projects in the works? Maybe, I don't know, maybe this is a Megan question more than anything else to work with CROG on on funding opportunities?
Yeah, so they go over the available funding, usually during our municipal services. And they certainly have folks over there that I can reach out to for more information on on grants that they have that are out there.
We, we, just to build on Megan's point, we now issue a monthly newsletter. Where we look at federal and state funding opportunities, and I think we're, we're just going to continue to build that service. We added staff for that purpose a couple of years ago, and it's proven to be pretty successful. Under the bipartisan infrastructure law, we helped our towns bring in about $50 million thus far over the two year period.
Good stuff, thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So just to build off of that, did you have a question? You know, this is just echoing some concerns of folks living in town here, I noticed that. Just me being older, I guess, you know, complaining about speeders, but a few of the egresses here off of the green. Right up here, adjacent to the building, there's one, there's a, a speed limit monitor that will actually flash speed. As well as. Want to say on the backside of this road here. A lot of the comments I hear from the public are people speeding coming in from old post. And there's a couple egresses off of the green that don't have those signs to kind of dissuade people from. People are going to speed no matter what, but it's a good addition to add. Into the town green here, and more specifically, you guys were mentioning how this reconfiguration would stop traffic or or. Improve traffic flow, so I was wondering if that was kind of building off of Katie's question, if that would be something that could be looked at as well.
Certainly, Rob, you want to talk maybe about our roundabout study, Vision Zero work, how we look at these issues?
Yeah, speeding is a, is a national issue now, and so is safety. And unfortunately, during COVID, speeds went up and. And law enforcement went down, and so we're dealing with those ramifications of that being some serious. Increases in fatality rates all around the country. We just did start a Vision Zero Council as part of a grant we got. And so we're looking at how to potentially address these issues going forward, law enforcement is is one of the components of of that. And, you know, specifically on specific roads, you know, it depends on, you know, the ownership of the road, whether it's a DOT road or or a town road. And what can be done, you know, falls under those purviews of who owns it, but we're certainly open to. Anybody's, you know, assisting anybody in that capacity if they reach out to us.
So that would, that would be something that we could. Utilize you guys as an avenue to, to, I'm talking like two or three signs that are so empowered, you know. I believe that's what the two are already. That we already have.
I can handle that. Yeah, with DOT, I'll get to it by manager's report, building on exactly what you're talking about. But we, so a couple of signs is something DOT would handle for us, just offline, that had no cost.
Yes. Good to know the background.
Thank you, councilor, if I could just add to Rob's comments briefly, so Vision Zero, if you're not familiar with that term. That's about how do we reduce serious accidents, crashes and fatalities, virtually eliminate them over a period of time. So it's something of an international movement that's taking hold here in the US. And we just formed a task force for the very first time last week.
Are you involved in the West Hartford part of it?
So yes, yes, we did provide some technical assistance there.
Successful or at least slow getting going here, right?
So West Hartford, you know, is the first municipality in the state really to. Not to form a task force, but to issue a plan.
Yeah.
So we're, we.
Can all learn from their experience.
It's interesting, too, because there were comments, there was a common period and. And some of the comments said you're moving way too slow, and other comments said you're moving way too fast, this is too much change. So it's a tough thing from a public relations standpoint, too, for learning.
Any other questions?
Just one more question, you mentioned PFAS a couple of times, and I've read articles on it now, and I even read that bottled water, the majority of bottled water is microplastics in it.
Yes.
It's almost unavoidable to be exposed to this stuff at this point. So are there studies being done for our region to determine potential impact PFAS has on our current water supply?
So they're, they're being administered by DPH, I think in our region, but statewide.
Okay.
There's a monitoring program.
Will we see any kind of report on that coming out anytime soon about?
I can check on timing, can check on the timing of that.
There's some active legislation going on around PFAS studies, too.
Yes.
Any other questions? Well, thank you guys for coming very much, it's, it's, you're doing good work, so thank you for all your support for the years.
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members, town manager. We're pleased to have you as a member, look forward to continuing our good working relationship.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item 8.2, which is the discussion on architectural plans and specifications. Or exterior renovations to the old Towne County Jail.
Great, so with this, I have Megan Masa, our grants coordinator and project manager here in the Towne Talon. And this, there was some, some issues with an ADA ramp at the jail museum. This all stemmed from that, a grant was obtained loosely to explore placing it. For those who aren't aware, in a building like the jail museum, you need a specific type of architect. To do, to, just changes to a historic building like the jail museum, so it's not, it's not your typical project, there's a lot of subtleties that get worked in. So with that, Megan, do you want to go ahead and explain what you did before we are?
Sure, it's actually before my time here as a grants and projects manager. That they applied for a grant through SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. To hire a qualified historical architect to put together a conditions assessment of the current condition of. The exterior porches and the handicap ramp, and then to provide some guidance on how we go forward with repairs. Also included with that are plans and specifications so that we could go out to bid. And we do have the architect, I believe, on Zoom with us, Kent McCoy. I don't know if it's possible to give them permissions to share his screen, but he could walk us through the presentation. If we're able to do that.
I don't see it here. Thank you.
Kat, can you hear me, so you're able to talk?
All right, so you can all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good, good, sorry, I had intended to be there tonight and. My back went out, so driving just wasn't in the cards. But as Megan said, I'm, I'm an architect, licensed architect here in Connecticut. With a specialty in historic preservation, recognized by the state of Connecticut as a historic preservation architect. And we competed with other firms to get the job of the porch restoration and new handicap ramps at the old Towne County Jail. And so I will share with you two documents, one is the assessment report that we we prepared. And then the other will be the construction documents for the for the renovations. So I'm going to share my screen. And.
You might have to make him co-host in order to let him share his screen.
I believe so.
All right, this is what I was afraid of, let's see. The drawings are on my desktop, but I'm not being given an option. Of the desktop.
Mike, can you make him a co-host?
Yeah, he, he is a co-host right now, so.
All right, I'm going to close this then and do it again, see if that works. Share screen. Oh, not there. Try advanced. All right, they're on my desktop here and I can't seem to access them. Megan, is there any way you could access them on your computer and I could just talk about them?
Can we do that, can you bring up the packet, Brian?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're, they're just showing up here.
Hey, you want to make that announcement that. That that it's included in the packet available?
Yes, we're going to be going through the. The architect report that's in our packet, unfortunately, we're not sharing the screen well tonight, so this information is already in our packet. I guess we can put it in the meeting minutes, too, just in case.
Sure.
If you want to, sure.
Should I then just describe the contents of both packages, Megan? Would that be a good way?
If you want to, if you want to start, I don't know if you want to give a brief overview of your.
Oh, here it is, okay, all right.
Through.
All right. Yeah, so as I said, we competed for the project and we're lucky enough to win it. On our team was Beth Actley, who's a structural engineer, also specializing in historic structures. And so we got into the building, you could scroll forward from here. And generally, what we found was that. What was astounding was that so much of the original architectural fabric was in place, corbels, brackets, rails. With the exception of just a few little pieces, they're all there, they need to be scraped and painted and abated and reassembled, but they're there. The big problem with the porches really is structural on the first floor, that the piers. That support the first floor of all the porches have deteriorated, and which is why the the porches are sort of dropping. And pulling away from the building. So what our report recommends is, well, of course. Abating, scraping, sanding, repainting all the elements and reassembling them. But at the first level, removing the floorboards, removing the structural framing underneath it. Finding out what has happened, has a brick pier rolled, were these just, you know, wooden elements? Left in the earth, how, you know, how they're framed and reframe them, so reframe the, from the first floor to grade. With pressure treated lumber and then replace the decking in kind with what's there. And basically reassemble the porches, so that's what this portion of the report identifies. Then if we move forward, we also looked at the ramp. This is all based on the porches, all right, the ramps. So the ramps are in tough condition, both structurally and from a code perspective, a little steep. A little narrow, and you can see in the photographs here how nails are beginning to rust out, the framing is beginning to rot out. It's propped up with two buys in locations, as you can see there on the lower right. So we were tasked with designing a new handicap access ramp to the building to replace what you see here. And the solution to that, I'll show you in the drawings. We're also asked to produce a budget for the repairs that you can see here, and I broke it down into. Elements of work, so of course, site preparation, the demolition of the existing ramps. Any scaffolding and shoring you're going to need, all the carpentry to disassemble and reassemble the porches and paint them. The new concrete piers to support the porch, porch framing and the porch floors. And that came out to, I think it's our call, if you can scroll down, a little over $400,000, yeah, 428. And then we added in escalation for, to get us up to 2024. And then a construction contingency, which is just money that the owner holds in their pocket for unforeseen circumstances. So that you know you can cover something if removal of the architectural elements indicates that something else is wrong behind them. And then an owner contingency of about half that, so 5% for an owner contingency, so for a overall project cost of 500, a little over $500,000. Excuse me. And just to, which sounds like a lot of money, I can say, though, we're working also on the Hurlbut Dunham House in Weathersfield. Similar scope of work, except it's just one porch and a ramp. And a simpler ramp than what you've got here, and that project came in at $360,000. So I felt comfortable with the roughly 500,000 as an overall project cost. The drawings you see here show that this is the demolition drawing, it shows, you know, the existing ramp to be removed. It shows, you know, the existing ramp to be removed and the porch floors to be removed. Go on to the next one, this one shows the second floor of the building and what needs to be done at the porch roofs, there are details later in the set that spell this out a little bit better. And then the roof plan to show that existing roof condition up above. And again, we included photographs so that a contractor can refer to the photograph when they're bidding the work to know what it is that we're talking about, so when we say restore, oh, and I should point out that these drawings are supplemented by a specification book of, I don't know, 500 pages or so, that if you needed to look up how to how to prepare the wood for repainting, or anything that, you know, all the, all the really technical how-tos are in the specification book. And let's see. So, okay, there's the demolition of existing. These are just code-related items. Okay, here we get to the meat, if you go back one, please, Mega, Megan. No. Was there one? No, okay, maybe not. This shows the structural framing and the concrete piers that would go into supporting the new ramps, how they're framed. And then the next drawing will give you a sense of the plan of it, so that I'm sorry, these are the porch, so these show the new porch floors. Level two, level three porch repairs with the photographs keyed in. There, okay, so new concrete landing here to the right is what I'm looking for. I see, I'm only seeing a portion of the drawing. If the portion of the drawing, there we go. And if you could slide down a little bit, shows you the configuration of the new ramp. So it comes up along the side of the building as it currently does, you turn 90 degrees. Actually, come down on the page a little bit. Okay, yeah, so you turn 90 degrees when you come from the front lawn, you ramp up a little bit more. And that's the dimension where we're making up the code deficiency from the existing ramp in terms of slope. And you land on a deck with a railing that allows the door to open and you can enter the building from a wheelchair or walker or whatever. And then on access with the door, there's now a wider set of steps that bring you down to a flat deck outside the entrance to the jail. And then that entrance, after you slide up on the drawing a little bit, from that deck, you go down another ramp, turn 90 degrees alongside the building and come out at grade. So it kind of coordinates, visually it simplifies the ramps and gets you in the building. One of the, one of the tricks was, there's that bulkhead down into the basement, which in this case, we showed a deck overlapping it with a hatch cover over it. If you needed to get down there to move a piece of equipment or whatever you could, but then it would otherwise be closed. Depending on how frequently you use that, that bulkhead, though, we could just eliminate part of that deck. It's not code required. And then let's go on to the next drawing. Okay, these drawings start to show the elevations of the ramp. So you can see here that rather than just have the legs, the framing legs of the ramp exposed and, you know, dirt and debris under it, we're showing a kind of a vertical board and batten, or not board and batten, but V-jointed ship lap type siding, filling in underneath the decks, give it a neater, more appealing appearance, since in many ways, this is your main entrance for people coming up from the parking lot. Or from, or from the lawn. This is a side view of the main ramp that comes up. What you're looking at now is it coming up to the lower level, and what you're looking at now is coming up to the main level of the building from the front lawn. And then here we get more into the porch restoration. Again, it's all keyed back to photographs that are in the specifications, so that the scope of work should be quite clear. But it's essentially, you know, anything that's loose and falling apart, gets disassembled and reinstalled. Anything that's rotted gets replicated, and then the first floor of the porches gets removed and replaced with new framing and structure below it. Front of the building. They've also called for the front walk to be reset, because it is settled and heaved over time, so it doesn't align with the steps currently, so we do have that in our scope of work to reset those steps. These are some details about how the ramp is built, how the handrails work, how the guardrails work. Same thing for the porches. Some more forming details for, for porches, and this is, on the left there, you're seeing the hatch cover that goes over the bulkhead down into the basement. How that works.
That's it.
And that's it. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any other information you want to give us before we go to question, Megan?
Um, I think that's it, I mean, they took a lot of time, they've spent a number of hours over at the jail, like, collecting good information, and they put a lot of effort into this. And the state has reviewed it, they are satisfied with what's in the, in the report and the plans, the building official has signed off on it. I'm very comfortable that these are an accurate representation of the condition and what we need to do to move forward.
Megan, do you have any grants identified to help pay this $500,000?
Yeah, there are a couple different opportunities. There is a grant through SHPO. And the grant awards are up to $200,000, but it's a one-to-one town match. So we would have to apply, I guess, in January of '25, I believe. And then there is actually something that Kenny brought to my attention, a possibility of a tax credit. And I'm not as familiar with that, I did print out some of the information. Kent might be able to explain a little bit more if he has information on, on that. And then there was also Preservation Connecticut has, I think it's called the 1772.
1720, right, yeah.
Yeah, and I think those are small grant awards. I think the last year's awards were topped out at $10,000. So I don't know that we can combine different funding sources, but we might be able to do work in phases to capitalize on some of these different options.
Right, yeah, the historic tax credit can represent 25% of the cost of construction for what they call qualified expenses. And typically, they don't cover site work. So I'm assuming that means they won't cover sidewalks and resetting the stones. But because the ramps are all construction, I'm assuming they would cover that and they would cover the porch restoration. So, yeah, you could apply for historic tax credits, and how that works is when the project is complete, you have to pay for it. And then the town, then the state writes out a voucher for 25% of the cost of the project, and you sell that voucher to a utility, typically Eversource buys them, they used to buy them at dollar per dollar, I understand now they're paying a little less than a dollar per dollar. But so say it comes out to about 20 to 25% of the cost of the project.
That's for homeowners, that particular tax program.
What's that?
That particular tax credit program that you're referring to is for homeowners and requires at least one unit to be owner-occupied for five plus years.
That's a different one, yeah, no, yes, that's the historic residential historic tax credit. That exists as well, but I'm talking about the straight state historic tax credit just for commercial buildings.
Okay. Any else?
Well, Megan, she'll look under every rocket in every drawer for any grant money to try to get this, you know, if not all at once in phases, but again, you know, you're looking at a few hundred thousand dollars, and so we'll try to do everything we can to find money, but in all honesty, this is a very expensive building for the town of Talon at $15,000 a year to keep the lights and heat on, that before snow and grass and hundreds of thousand dollars lying down the road. We'll explore all options as to the most fiscal benefit of the town. But Megan, her job is, she knows she's charged to find any grant money that she can in the meantime.
Right, Alex, here's some questions.
Yeah, just very quickly, I appreciate you guys presenting that. I'm a little perplexed as to, you know, why we're being presented this before some other ADA-approved things that we've had before us. I have to echo what, you know, Susan Hughes had mentioned, I think ironically, this is what's, you know, called to be putting the cart before the horse. I'd like the sidewalk to be readily available before the building. I'm a huge advocate for historic preservation, especially in this town. And I don't like to put the cart before the horse, but if I were to, Kent, my question for you is the construction contingency that's included here, specifically to the porches. You know, we're talking about taking this, alleviating this porch that's sagging into the tie-ins of the building, which are presumably plunky or rotten. So what is the scope of this construction contingency? I mean, are we climbing up and up and up to the eaves of the building or the fascia and soffit of the overhangs, or, you know, where does this end?
Yeah, I mean, I think from, from our, you know, assessment of the building, I think we've got the scope pretty well covered. And, and that, you know, one of the things, that's one of the reasons we called for the porch floors and their framing underneath and whatever structure is underneath to remove and replace. So we know we've got a good sound, solid foundation to hold these porches up. That's not to say that you might not be working on some flashing up around the balcony on the third floor and remove something and go, oh my God, these rafters are rotted adjacent to it, and that's why we recommend an owner contingency of 20% of the cost of construction, so that if you find a, gee, we didn't know that, you've got the money in your pocket to cover it. But I feel that the documents pretty well capture the likely scope of work.
And then the last question I had for you was given the precedent set for historically time, you know, historically appropriate to the time period, are we going to be using material that is? Because I see, I see a lot of pictures in the or I see a lot of wording in the presentation before us, composite here, composite there, trim. Are we going to be using time-appropriate material?
Yes, we are using, yeah, we are, and that's a condition usually of the state historic preservation office on any grant. So we typically, you know, if it's an existing condition, like the porches, we provide new material in kind to match what had been there. Because they will require that, yeah.
Any other questions? Jenny, any questions?
Sorry, I forgot to, you, I think everything that I had has already been answered.
I know that I did send several questions in ahead of time, and the questions and answers will be included in our meeting packet for transparency. The maybe we'll go over them really quick, so, Brian, the value of the building, what's the value? I mean, we talked about renovations, sometimes we consider based on the value, so.
The assessed value was $1.2 million with all the structures on the property, the entirety of the property.
And it's four structures on the property?
I believe so, you got the museum, a shed, Kathy, am I missing one?
The barn, the other museum.
The barn.
And the two garages with the lions and the scouts. And they're all kind of codependent? That's the other trick of that property.
So we're, we're talking about half a million dollars in renovation on $1.2 million in property value?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you, again, these numbers will be in the, this information will be in our packet, but thank you for the information about annual visitor numbers.
Did I mention that?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. You can, you can speak when it comes to hold a comment, thank you. Are these renovations, like, do they have to be done? What's the what's the need here?
We didn't get into whether they have to be done or not, that would be something we do with our building inspector, as we do it again. If we can identify grant funding and it makes fiscal sense for the town, you know, and that'll be a decision to the board or the council, we would move forward, but at the same time, you know, our, our building inspector, you know, has recommended other plans for this facility, and part of the council goals were to buy, look at potential properties to purchase and potential properties to sell. And certainly, this building would come across that as well, but that's, that's a little ways out.
And I know that you were going to be looking into value engineering, and I guess alternate, or perhaps alternate priorities that the building inspector might have for this property. So as those come up, will you be continuing to share them with us?
Of course, yes, and again, there's no ADA access inside, I want to mention that as well, extremely limited. And for transparency to the council, at 1.2 million, all the way down to 500,000, if we were to sell the property, the taxes at the time of take-in would be around between 30,000, if you devalue all the way down to 500, about 15,000 or so annually.
And that, that doesn't take into consideration the annual costs that we pay?
15,000, yes, before, DVW does work on the property.
Okay, and can you remind us again, what's the income on this property right now?
$1 a year, septic is going to be an issue coming up as well, and it's a shared septic with TN. So there's, there's a lot of nuances to work through there, and a lot of, a lot of expense hanging over the town's head in the structure.
What are the next steps at this point?
Um, I guess Megan starts looking to identify funding, and we'll work with Jim and see if we can prioritize. Off the top of my head selfishly, I'd like to get the ramps done first. And if need be, we can block off the porches from use until at such times we can make them safe. But again, that will all fall to the building inspector. There's, there have been some questions, as you're aware, the council Historic Society is applying in a lawsuit against the town. So there's a list of questions in regards to buildings that instead of going directly to me, I had to go through our attorneys. Looks like there's some other work to be done, and I thank the gentleman here for coming, and I'll respond to those questions via the attorney, so hopefully some of the minor things can get worked through to keep it moving.
She has more questions? All right, thank you, Megan, and thank you, Kent, for your presentation here tonight, appreciate it.
Sure, very welcome.
The next item on our agenda is a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute and deliver on behalf of the town an application and contract with the State Library Association for Historic Documents Preservation Grant for, basically, your 24th one.
Always a great grant for us, and our, our town clerk does great money. This is, you know, typically a formality, and it's really about preserving records, and I'll let I'm not going to pretend to understand the whole nuances of it, I'll let Kathy, who's here, I believe, let me, let me stop sharing my screen. And Kathy Begon, are you on by any chance? So Mike, stand by, I'm going to find out from Kathy which one, which, which, I don't see her name jumping out at me, and I'll see Dave would be the other name, right? No.
And I'll see Dave would be the other name, right? No.
If I could call on historical memory and maybe Colleen can help me here, uh we this is a grant that we apply for every year. Uh for the town clerk to uh digitize some of our records on an ongoing basis.
iPhone seventeen, Mike, can you unmute that, please, and give a video? Kathy, see if you can unmute.
I just made her a co-host.
There she is.
Hi, Gabby. Hi, good evening, everybody. Sorry about that, I couldn't unmute myself. Um the historic grant Katie and Colleen may remember from last year, but for all the new counselors. Um every year, the Connecticut State Library gives all the towns an opportunity to apply for a fifty-five hundred dollar grant. And those funds are to be used to um for preservation purposes of the records that we keep in our vault for the town. Um just so that you have a history of it, for the past five years, we've used every single one of those funds. To preserve, clean and preserve and rehang original maps for the town. We just finished the last book with this past grant. Um in your packet, you have um three invoices from a vendor called Atkins. That we're planning on using the fifty-five hundred dollars coming up for next fiscal year. And what we're gonna do with that one is um we have these very giant, very heavy index books. That go back to set, they go from seventeen fifteen to nineteen seventy. And we are going to have those records um reimaged and put into new binders. Because our binders are starting to show some wear and tear from the oils from people's fingers, from the constant opening of those binders. That's the biggest bulk that we're good planning on using this year. Um we're also going to use a portion of it for microfilming. Microfilming all of the minutes, such as the minutes of your meetings, um but minutes and vital records for the entire town. We microfilm those and they're stored off-site um for preservation purpose. And then we also have a couple of um index books, very old index books. Full of vitals, vitals meaning births, deaths and marriages that need to be preserved. The pages themselves need to be preserved and they need to be rebound. Um those are all in your packet. And that is um that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Questions?
I got a question, I got a couple. Um it sounds it sounds like it sounds pretty neat, the the work you're doing. But um did can any of that money be used towards storing this information electronically? Do we have the information electronically and and what's the what's the point of the, I think you said, microfilm?
Yes, so every every image is microfilmed and stored off-site. And that's actually required by state statute. Um the Connecticut State Library is still putting together guides to have everything electronically stored. Um they're putting together new procedures for that. They're still a little bit. Um I guess it might sound stonage-ish to you that they're microfilming, but that's still the what we're doing.
So that's a that's a stay requirement, not like we.
It that's a requirement, yeah. We have to have images um stored off-site, yeah, for preservation purposes. If there is a uh state of emergency, if, you know, flood, the the vault catches fire, how many? How many um documents we don't want to lose, so we have we have to store them off-site.
And and are those documents also stored electronically? On like, you know, um.
Uh a lot of the minutes are, um and the state has recently, just recently started a death index. Births are electronic through the state um for since, I think, two thousand eight. Um prior to that, we keep on a computer, we have files of all of these documents as well. And they're off-site. Oh, well, there let me let me rephrase that. They're off-site up to a certain year. Because these pro when we microfilm them and store them off-site, the charges are hefty enough for it to be. Included in part of the grant money.
Okay. And those maps, are those maps stored electronically as well, or are those pretty much just?
Yes, the maps, the maps are all, once they've been preserved, they've been microfilmed. And I request the uh the images on a flash drive and I then download them onto our system. And um they are sent to our vendor, who then makes them available on USlandrecords.com for the public to look at. So they are all electronic and available to see.
Great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No, okay, then we have a motion before us outlined in Agenda Item eight point three. Is there a motion to approve that resolution? Motion made by Colleen, is there a second? Joe, second. Is there any further discussion? We're gonna do a roll call vote because we are hybrid tonight, and we'll start with you, Jen.
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
I'm also an I, so that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. We're always impressed with your strength and um your just your knowledge. I'm always blown away. She works directly under Lisa Hancock. Uh but but Kathy, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, good night.
All right, next on our agenda is a consideration of a resolution. Uh to declare some vehicles as surplus property.
So we have a few vehicles there in your uh packet. Uh Mike Wilkinson can can talk if you have any uh questions about them, I believe. And uh this is the backend and these things, by the time it gets to this end, the pictures do not do it justice. If you go down there and look at them, um just how tore up these these vehicles are. Um so this is the process of us getting rid of them. We try to sell them for as much as we can. Um and if not, they go to scrap. Uh often those auto parts is the um pays the most money for it. Uh Mike, do you have anything to add?
Um just that, yeah, according uh again, this is according to the um code. That um the town council has to approve any um any vehicles or any equipment. Uh they have to propose uh surplus it so that we can get rid of it, so that's why it's on the council agenda. Um if it's a worth no value, um the town manager can deem it uh of no value and get rid of it. But this might have some minor value that we could sell, so.
Any questions? Where where does the um if we sell it, where does the money go?
Mike, you remember where it goes? Or Lisa?
Lisa knows, doesn't it go to the?
Yeah, it goes in the capital non-returning fund and then what we do is during the budget process. For the capital improvement planning, a lot of times we'll recommend use of some of those funds towards pay-as-you-go projects.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Uh then is there a motion to approve the resolution in eight point four? We're just gonna remove the word. Below.
Following.
Following, uh because the list of vehicles is actually preceding the uh the motion. So the motion would be uh to. I'm gonna just read it, be resolved that the list of vehicles are hereby declared surplus. And may be disposed in accordance with policy A one seventy-six dash four, uh policy concerning disposal of surplus personal property.
So.
Thank you. By Chris, is there a second? Joe, second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we're gonna do it again, Jen?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Alex?
Hi.
I'm also an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh next is eight point five, which is a consideration of a resolution clarifying the charge of the road salt task force.
Okay, so obviously we we already have a road road salt task force, but um there's been some asked to um kind of uh. Talk through the charge specifically, what are what are what the role of said task force, of which I'm a member and you are as well, Shelby.
Thank you, and this came to us from Vice Chair Jacob Murray, um who unfortunately is not here today. But uh he suggested we add to the um. To the charge uh coordinating with various stakeholders involved in the issue to make it clear. That the task force is responsible for that coordination. Uh I talked to the task force about it at our last meeting. There were no concerns from members of the task force, board from our attorney. So we brought it down. Any questions? Who are you, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, who are you including as stakeholder that we asked to include in residence on this? This is coordinating the various stakeholders involved in the issue. That's the additional language that's being added. Not to change the membership of the task force. I just.
Yeah, would it be prudent to be adding residents that are?
That uh at this point.
It's not about adding, it's just, you know, it's communicating with them and coordinating the stakeholders, so.
Okay.
I have no problem with that. We want to we want to communicate as much as possible. We've had one public meeting. Uh a stakeholder might be a resident, a stakeholder might be a aqua pump or.
Right, yeah.
Stakeholders, you know, there are state agencies, it depends, but we wanted to find that, you know, we're responsible for coordinating, same. I guess that would be most likely me in the end, um but that's that's, we just wanted it, Jake wanted it uh in there and and certainly I embrace that.
Is this, sorry.
Go ahead, Jay, I already spoke once, go ahead.
Is this formalizing sort of what you're already doing? Is that what's happening?
I believe so, yes.
Great.
Yep. I mean, do you want?
No, I was just gonna say, I think it's great, I was just trying to clarify, so it's like you're doing, we're already doing some of these things.
Yes, okay, yes, it's a yes, it's just clarification of what we're already doing. Jacob's recommendation was, we just caught by it.
Great.
And we didn't have any concerns about doing so.
Thank you, Katie.
The most important thing is just driving at timelines, is that additional language that's gonna be, or is that a a variable that we?
It I believe that timelines uh in large part are a variable that we cannot control.
Much to our consternation.
I figured I'd say it.
All right. Is there then a motion to approve the resolution in Agenda Item eight point five? Moved by Alex, is there a second by Chris? Any further discussion? Okay, we will do the roll call vote then, Jen?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Alex?
Hi.
I'm also an I, so that is unanimous, thank you very much. Uh next is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions, of which we have none at this point. Uh that's good news, thank you to both of you gentlemen for staying current with that. Next is item nine, old business, of which we have none, and that refers to item ten, which is the report of the town manager.
Give me a second here.
Sorry, we just cruised through.
That is what I needed. That's not it. No, it doesn't, Sarah, I need, I just need my, it's just right here, this is gonna drive me to work now, then, got it. Bear with me, Chair.
It's fine, I lose things all the time.
I didn't go anywhere. Thank you. Really going nowhere. All right. Um let's go over some things, so uh uh. WTIC ten eighty reached out um last week and selected Tallent link. To broadcast their show live on Friday morning, the morning show, six to ten AM. Highlighting any uh new businesses and such in town uh to come. That there's a possibility that we might get Nancy Wyman. Um they asked for, they 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 looked, they did most of all the research. And any interesting residents, uh Tim Restall uh will talk, there's a possibility, someone, the president of Member Source who's in town. Uh but they're gonna do their entire show coordinated, it's all positive for Tallent, it'll be at. They they asked to select a business that's open, Papa Tees serves breakfast on Friday mornings, they'll look, the pop, the owner's gonna open early. For them to come in and set up at five. Um if you want to go in and see them broadcasting live out of Papa Tees Friday morning, I'll be there all day. Uh or all from six to to ten AM, uh coordinating as best we can. Santini, I know, was on their list. Uh Metal Genius Joe uh was on their list. Um it I believe they had asked about Lennox. Um so it's it's gonna be a very positive thing uh for Tallent as they do have a a large morning uh audience there. Um Brian's, Brian's a very balanced.
This Friday, that is?
This Friday. Yep, um so a all good news. Um let's go to some bad news. There was an incident at the rec center uh last, I believe, Thursday, uh this past Thursday. Where um a woman who stays uh at the residence next door, um kids kicked a ball against uh the building. And she, the kids then went inside, she came inside um and voiced her displeasure uh with that. Her behavior was such that it uh at the very least caused annoyance and alarm. Speaking legally there, and uh the Connecticut State Police were notified uh and responded. Uh there are some questions in regards to security, in regards to how fast they were um notified. And um something I we all took here very seriously. With that, Chief Laitel, who's uh one of the um most respected people in school uh security, and this is not a school. Uh but Chief Laitel, myself, Director Lappin, who does our cameras and alarming systems. And um Bruce Watt, we all went down on first thing, first thing Monday morning, um and just reviewed everything possible. Uh first of all, a letter was sent home to all the parents defining uh what happened and um. Some of the steps we've taken in regards to um safety at at there. Uh this incident, again, best case scenario for something to happen and cause review of uh. Of all our our security down there. Now, as you know, I don't like to discuss um security publicly. Uh too much in these types of situations and getting into actual specifics. Uh we do have an emergency ops operations plan. Uh the director was in possession of that. Myself and the emergency management director, uh as a natural process, some changes that were already underway. We'll we'll reexamine that and he was, we're making changes to it anyways, but nothing that would have had any significant impact on this. Uh we will look to have the the emergency operations plan for all town employees, again, redistributed with a sign-off. And also have when a new employee is hired and part of the on onboarding process, that they get the emergency operations plan. Uh and it's reviewed specifically by with their director as to the location they are. Uh we increase some security with the camera system um and basically creating more access for others. Uh that would be immediately impacted to have uh the access to the security cameras. Already underway, however, was improving our software around the the um security cameras and and um. That's that's already happening. Um we're gonna meet with Parker Place, um as this resident um has presented issues. For public safety prior to, um and and I don't know if it's a resident, it it it's an odd situation. So uh we we are gonna meet uh with Parker Place and as I believe Sarah Bass set that up with Bruce and myself. Uh the troopers took statements. Um and in my estimation, the fact they're taking statements, and when I say annoyance and alarm, it sounds to me like. Um that a judge is gonna get a look at the at their report at some point and make a decision on probably causing arrest. I I don't know that for sure yet, uh but they certainly are are doing a thorough investigation if they've if they've taken statements from our staff. Uh we're putting more hard security in place. Um after looking at this, we reviewed the state requirements for this type of um. Daycare type of facility that we have out there in the programming, if you look at the state requirements, there are none. Um so we are well above and beyond that, obviously, but now we're gonna get even uh a little bit more um security. Again, at no great cost, uh we're gonna improve the alarming there as well. Again, that was already underway. There will be panic buttons installed. Um that that again, already underway. Uh here in Town Hall, um twenty-five panic buttons are going in. Um that was that was paid last last budget year. Um and and an amount will be installed at the at the rec center as well. Again, I referenced the note to parents, so that's where we, that's where we stand on that. We've reached out to certain, some people have contacted us that had concern. We've reached out to them as best we can to assuage any, any concerns. Some of it got. As it was described to them, might not have been exactly how it happened, but as a parent, I can completely understand the anxiety. There was some questions as regards to the timing it took for police response. Again, it was, it was a code one, and that's how they would classify it, meaning that the threat had been removed at that point, the woman is no longer on the property, it was no longer an active threat, so. Now it comes into, you know, staffing and such. There was a trooper that does have a child in the program, and that, when he got there, that certainly seemed to expedite the police response. Much quicker, so it, it's, it's underway and then the improvements will be made, and I'm glad to. That, that it was at such a low cost and that no one was hurt. Some students here, some kids obviously saw what happened and, and we work with Bruce and that talk to parents about, you know, talking to your kids about what had happened and the language that was used. Jacob had asked about the immigration plan. That the state of Connecticut talked about, should, should there be a bus that, let's just say stops off at the Peter Park Lot and wants to unload there. We have a very solid plan in place. Chief Laitel, I tasked him with doing it after a meeting with. My former, my former outfit there in Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and. We, we have a model that the towns around us, I'm, I'm assuming will cross out Talon and write their town's name in it and, and put it in there. Basically, you know, we would have to cover for twenty-four hours. My concern is that we don't use any schools at all, we don't. We would use senior center, rec center, and that sort of thing. Should we have any and then call in for additional state resources and then very. Defined, you know, just a really rough way to describe what would happen in regards to that, but it's a well-defined plan that John did a good job. In regards to the, the skating rink that Colleen had mentioned got taken down. I sent three letters of thanks and to be included in the personnel file of the three DPW employees who took it upon themselves to. Really base that project and make it a success and going above and beyond with the, with the carpeting, the benches, all that. So I wanted that in their, in their personnel files, those letters were signed off on today. There's a new banquet and event facility in town, Carmen's, it's the old Italian club, they gutted it, they redid it. They, they, you know, not that, it's a great improvement, you know, having that building rehabbed inside. It's weddings, it's banquets, you know, you know, like a sports team wants to have their end of year banquet there, they can have that there, weddings there. There's, there's catering, obviously opportunity there, they don't have like a kitchen or a bar, but certainly they're, they're able to, to handle that catering up to two hundred and fifty upstairs. Some conference rooms, like if the business wanted to have a conference down there in the basement. It is a Hispanic-owned business, it's nice to have that diversity in town, and they are some friends from a former occupation of mine. And it was great to, great to see them, so I was very happy to learn that upon there. So we, we promoted as best we could on social media along with. The Commerce, what is it, the? The Chamber, yes, thank you very much. They were there as well. It, it went well, and if you get a chance, stop down there and, and take a look. It was at eight thirty this morning. There's a fatality on Route seventy-four on a motorcycle last week, over the weekend, Chief Laitel and I went out and walked it. Only because, well, I'm gonna do that on any fatality, but this is the second one in that exact area involving a motorcycle. We've reached out to DOT, as you talk, we're gonna, we're gonna walk that, that whole corridor and look at some signage and, and some improvements there. They haven't gotten a look at the police report yet. Cars would have handled that and it wouldn't be available for a while. However, there was an, an fatal from a year. Almost a year ago as well, all of that's gonna be reviewed, and then there'll be some, DOT's was, was very, very good about it. Then we'll see if we can make it, make that a little safer. Should you get a chance, heading here from the center town out on seventy-four. You'll get to Burbank and it's going up the hill, park hill as I would call it, but there's the guardrail on the right, just take a look at the guardrail, things chewed up. I can't imagine how many accidents there's been there, so we're gonna, we'll meet out there again with DOT to look at that. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Anything to report? No? Okay. So we will move on then to item eleven, which is adoption of minutes. We have minutes in our packet. From the. February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four special meeting and February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Chris, is there a second?
Three.
Second by Joe, any discussion on minutes? No, okay, then we will do roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alex? I'm also an ayes, that is unanimous, thank you very much. Item twelve is correspondence to council.
Yes, so I said we've been very busy, receiving all kinds of emails. And I know we just got a few, maybe forty-five minutes, I put these in here. So, personally, I'm trying to answer as many as I can, but anyways, so we've received no last. Between last council meeting and this week, seventeen in support of the Board of Education budget. One of them was supported the four point eight four. Writers concerned about education reductions. We had a resident write in thanking Jim Pack when that building inspection for his dedication. Email regarding using a senior center, hoping, you know, have teens be able to use a senior center. When seniors are not using it, a concern of the historic district, two letters began disappointed from the last meeting regarding corporate funds. Wants, I don't want, wants to use, wants to use, use of funds. With budget with no body partnership and anonymous letter and, and see.
Yeah. I think that was it. Wonderful, thank you. It's a busy time for correspondence, so thank you.
I'm tired, I'm pretty tired, I am really.
So.
Is it about the minute? I mean, about the correspondence to council?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to speak in regards to specific targeted emails cast in the direction of councilwoman Colleen Uchuck. I would like to start by saying that each and every one of us was elected by the, this should be on record too.
And the correspondence to council? Yes, it's a response to the correspondence.
I would like to start by saying that each and every one of us was elected by the residents of this town to serve Talon in the absolute best of our ability. Unfettered by pay or other political distractions, it's, it is my fervent opinion that we are all serving. Our, as our founding fathers had dreamed, in a democracy with checks and balances. And specific to local municipal government, exactly what the Greeks described as direct democracy or face-to-face. It has come to my attention that only, not only multiple negative social media comments have been made regarding Colleen. But also very scathing emails. Written to her even from anonymous individuals, which I find to be curt, malicious in its intent and lacking hospitality. Let me remind you, we are all volunteers. And we all ran very specific campaigns in alignment with our party's beliefs and goals, but more specifically our own individual goals. For example, when I ran for the seat, I did so under a campaign promise to bolster our public safety and try to achieve a sustainable mill rate for every. Family in this town. Colleen, however, decided to run her own, on her own beliefs and values. And is here to achieve all of her specific goals with the goals that this council voted on to achieve, to achieve and strive for. The aforementioned social media posts and faceless emails are reprehensible and will not be tolerated. Especially to dissuade or even tell the counselor, quote, step down. If they don't vote a certain way. I really hope that at the end of the day, we all remember that we are neighbors. And volunteering our time for Talon to prosper and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about? Correspondence? If you'd like to, go ahead.
So, well put out, by the way, and I, I've read those emails as well, and I, I've seen some of the posts, not all the posts, and. You know, it's one thing to express your desire for, for certain things you want the town to do. And. You know, the, the support, the support you may have for certain functions or for certain parts of town government. But it's really another thing to, to, to challenge a person's personality. And, and really to, to in some ways try to belittle them, to force them into, into something that you, you want. And I think that's unfair to ask of, of any of our members. We're all volunteers here, we're all trying to do the best we can. And we, we represent the interest of the entire population, not just a small segment of, of. People that live in this town. There's fourteen thousand people that live in this town, and we all have a right to be here. And we all have the right to represent those people, and I think. It's, it's in our best interest for all of us to work together. We're not, we're not here to battle one another, we're, we're here to have good, solid discussions, but in the end. The best thing we can do is to, to come to an agreement and support. Things that we believe are of the best interest of our town. And, and try to silence some of the noise that really tries to belittle people in our town. So. I support Alex's opinion that that should stop, and people really need to consider, you know, be honest to work what we're trying to do here. And it's voluntary. We're not here for personal interest, we're not here for personal, that is of any, of any sort. We're just here to do. Here, here.
Thank you both. I'll speak at the council petition.
Jen, did you wanna say something about communications to council?
Sure, if we're going down this path. I, I think this, this isn't just, you know. It hasn't just been emails about Colleen, it hasn't just been emails about any other counselor, I mean. Katie, somebody called you multiple times, a, a radical progressive or a radical liberal, and that wasn't. Brought up in Alex's speech. You know, people are mean and they hide behind keyboards and it's not the correct thing to do and. And, and we don't get paid to do this, and it's, it's not very nice to be reading those emails. But in general, you know, it kind of comes with the territory. We unfortunately have to have thick skin here and we can do this. Every single meeting with every single email. You know, and I think there's been some good points made, but. It's definitely been an attack on. Everybody. I mean, it, it, it comes from, for both sides. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify that. It, it, there's been a lot of people that have been attacked in these emails, and, and you know, it's something we just can't really take to heart.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Unless there's anything more, I will move on to the chairperson's report. I did hold chair hour last Thursday at the library with. Chairman Andy Powell from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Chairman, Chairperson Susan Lustig from the Commission on People with Disabilities. We did have one resident come join us, we had a very nice conversation, it's always. Good to talk to various chairs and. Residents who wanna come, the next chair hour, I didn't write down what that is, I think it is April four. It's April eleventh, sorry, at six thirty in the library. And I don't remember who's joining me then, but I'm pretty sure there's more people to join. And did want to take this opportunity to follow up on the insurance conversation that we had in our last town council meeting. So in the last town council meeting, there were a number of questions about insurance, there were some specific questions about. The Board of Ed's contribution to insurance, as well as questions about the fund balance in the insurance account. I did take the opportunity to meet with town staff last week to get some more information about insurance. And I think the. The outcome of that meeting was a request from me for the town to provide to us a memo on the insurance. What the insurance program is that we're using, what are the status of the funds in the insurance, how are decisions made about. How to reach the yearly budgeted contributions, things like that. And that memo is gonna come to us next week with the insurance presentation to the town council as part of our budget. We didn't think there was time to add that to tonight's agenda, as it's already, you know, over two hours now and. We're. Adding the insurance discussion to tonight's agenda seemed a little bit of a stretch, and we have a number of meetings coming up. As you probably have seen in your calendar for budget, so this seemed to be the, the best path forward. That memo will be included in the meeting packet for whatever meeting that's gonna be presented at, so it will be publicly available. And of course, if we have questions on it when we come to the insurance part of our budget, we can absolutely can and should be asking questions about that then. I would also suggest if anybody has any specific insurance questions, you might want to send an email in to. Town manager Foley, just reminder, emails from council should copy Jacob and I on those emails, just for transparency reasons. And I will, I will tell you, I did ask a lot of questions.
I don't think you missed anything.
Right, yeah, I hope it's thorough and, and I hope that next year, we might be able to have a separate insurance discussion, maybe in January. So that we don't add more meetings to our wonderful and robust March meeting schedule. Speaking of our March meeting schedule, we do have a number of meetings coming up. The town manager's budget gets released to us and to the public tomorrow. Yep, it's lots of reading, that's gonna be the, that's gonna be the. That's gonna be how it's gonna be in my weekend. Next week, Wednesday and Thursday night. There will be a budget meeting each of those nights, tho- those meetings are gonna be held in this room. And then the following week, we have a budget meeting on Monday and then a regular council meeting on Tuesday. And then, because that's not enough. April first, there is, I'm sorry, April second is the budget public hearing. And then on April fourth, Thursday that week, the town council will vote on our budget. So lots of exciting budget meetings to come. Lots of reading to do. The other thing I would, I would just like to say is we have scheduled FOIA training for April first. And I think that invitation went out to councils. Members, not just a town council, but boards and commissions all throughout town to attend this FOIA training. FOIA is an important. Law that it's always good to get a refresher on, so I will be there for FOIA training. I think that's it. Onto item fourteen, which is communications and petitions from council persons. Colleen, did you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start, so. So I'm on, I was on Facebook now, but right before I signed off Facebook, I just wanted, we had a firefighter that just retired after. Twenty-five years of service and his name is firefighter Jeff Crossit, and apologize if I said his name wrong. And also Doug Grasico for thirty years of professional and volunteer service to the combat department. I did not realize he was. Still active as a volunteer, so thank you both of those gentlemen, it is impressive. So anyways, I'm not gonna go on about the emails, I appreciate Joe and Alex and Jen for their input. I, I did, I ran on bipartisanship, that's what I ran on. It's a little sad that now we get emails. Don't want a bipartisan budget, but we're okay with bipartisan leadership. Asking for straw holes for bipartisanship for the town manager, I just find I can't have it both ways. We know that two years ago when I was on the council, I was the one that said, let's put a full budget forward. It failed. We did it a second time. It passed with bipartisanship. While on year, it passed with bipartisanship. And it does matter in this community. I wish more people would come out to vote. Um, but yeah, that's what I ran on. Everything says that's what I ran on. I really want to work with this council. I'm really nervous. I don't want to swing vote, and I don't want to be put in that position. But thank you.
Any other comments from council persons? Okay. Uh, we will move on then to item fifteen, which is public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you are on Zoom, you can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. If you are in the room, you can come up to the table. Um, we will go back and forth. We'll start in the room. So if you could just give us your name and your address, we would appreciate it.
Charlotte in one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Hello, town council. I'll make this short compared to my typical speech. Like I said before, I'm disappointed. I did hear some items from Krog about funding and advocacy for contaminated wells in Talon and other towns, which is good news to hear, but is not quick enough for me in this eight-year process. The codifying of additional language in the road salt task force, plain and simple, is lip service. I already have contact with the town and its representatives. What will this do? How will this benefit the stakeholders, specifically the residents with affected properties? While I hear that talent will be getting some publicity from some publicity from a local news network that will be interviewing some local people and business owners, I hope you're ready for some negative publicity, because this situation is unacceptable. This is not a threat. It is forewarning. I will be sending a detailed story to several local news stations in the hopes that one of them picks this up on behalf of the residents of the town of Talon that have documented contamination of their wells from the town's rope felting practices. Another resident, last town council session, asked the council about accountability and who holds the council's feet to the fire. Clearly, residents of the town of Talon aren't able to do this, so my hope is that the state of Connecticut people, or maybe even Governor Lamont, are able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to give a public comment? You can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. I think that's Mary Lee Beebe.
Mary Lee, can you try to unmute?
Yeah, we are. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
So, um, let me lower my hand. So I also want to, um, I've been listening to um the meetings over the years, and and I do want to also voice my support for us to move forward um and try to try to make some progress and and resolve the road salt issue um in a more expeditious expeditious fashion. I know that this is a difficult issue. I know that um, understanding the movement of groundwater and the the actual causation is challenging. Um, this is my area of um professional expertise um in both civil and environmental engineering. However, it's been a long time, and I think we need to be, we we need to move forward and do haste. So um whatever we can do to further that, um, I fully support. Um, moving on to um the upcoming presentation on the budget um for education and um for our community. I really believe that nothing is more valuable than the people in the programs that educate our children. Um, unfortunately, since my youngest graduated almost twenty years ago, I've seen a steady erosion in programs and staffing. Um, I I don't normally um be very vocal in public meetings about this topic, but um, my child had the benefit of language classes in the second or third grade. Um, they had had enhanced art classes. They had STEM enrichment. My kids had either no pay to play or a maximum of thirty-five dollars per sport. And we have consistently not provided a level services budget, and because of this, I support the full funding requested by the Board of Education, including the stipulations um that they not be required to um contribute in excess um to the the ETF fund and um to the youth of fund. Uh, I think that I I applaud you guys for looking at a five-year plan um with the BOE, but we've consistently um underfunded our education, and we consistently, I guess, think that um cost of living allowances shouldn't apply to town services, government services, Board of Education services, while the rest of us expect to get cost of living of living allowances every year. Um, and finally, with the request, um, with respect to the request for decorum, I wholeheartedly agree. I volunteered in public office for the town for more than twenty-five years. I've been on the receiving end of both praise and vitriol, some of it extreme. Much of the content on social media, and I'm not on Facebook, guys, but it's frankly not worthy of consideration. I see a lot of it as as the equivalent of middle school bathroom gossip, and I think it should be treated as such. Um, dealing with communications via in-person testimony, email, or letters from residents that identify themselves, even when angry is part of our job, and I know it can be uncomfortable, and the decorum should also apply to us as elected officials. I think it's very, very important that we can express our um our doubts or questions about a program without ref- without accusing somebody of dishonesty or acting with malfeasance. And I am referring to um some of the comments that were made by both Colleen and Joe at the last meeting, and Colleen, you know I love you. Um, but I think it's very important to not be accusatory. It's important to question and verify. And it didn't come across that way. So I think moving forward, we should all kind of move on and gather ourselves and move forward constructively. Um, I agree that that agreeing in a bipartisan fashion is the best possible outcome, and hopefully that can happen. Um, but it it's really important to exercise decorum on both sides of this debate, both the the public official side and um the public commentary side. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to participate in vote participation? Go for it.
Hi. Uh, George Oldridge, fishing game road. Uh, just a couple of questions. One is, uh, because I'm not a computer person, is there any way of finding out how or when you have these meetings? Do I call Brian or somebody, or how do I find out when you're gonna have, you know, budget me? I don't see a lot of it in the journal. Once in a while it's a public notice, but not a lot of, you know, uh, when the Board of Ed presents their budget or you guys present your budget, is it just when it when it's like headline news in the journal that you guys are gonna have a a meeting or?
We have, I'm gonna answer.
Please.
George, call me anytime. Call the office.
Okay.
We have probably, we probably have to notice it, and there's requirements that we have to do. Um, if it's not getting you, I'm happy to. Just call. She can get you an email too, and just hit it.
Yeah, I am.
I I can mail you a hard copy of the schedule.
I would really appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Yeah. Um, and the only other thing is, as you see, I'm one of the few that show up all the time. I really care about the town. Uh, lifetime resident. And sometimes I get carried away a little bit, but I really appreciate what each and every one of you do. I've said that before to the other councils. It's it's I I appreciate it. I I know it. I think you should at least get paid a dollar. But then right away, you probably, you know, next budget, I want to raise. But anyways, seriously, I do appreciate what all of you do, and uh, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Is there anyone online who would like to make a statement? Jody Coleman Marziano, go ahead.
Why don't you go try to unmute Jody?
Thank you. Jody Coleman Marziano is speaking as a resident tonight at seventy-nine Talon Green. Um, I've lived here for over twenty-five years, and I just wanted to comment on what Mary Lee Beebe said about social media, and we're all volunteers here, and we all are doing the best that we can, and I agree with everything she said. Also about the um Board of Education budget, as an employee of the Board of Education, and also as a parent who has two graduate children, one graduated in twenty nineteen and one graduated in twenty twenty, which was the most difficult year of any graduate, I would have to say. Um, the services, level services have been being depleted significantly since um people I know who have graduated from Talon High School. I was not a graduate of Talon High School myself, but my children were, and the services are are nowhere near they used to be in the past. Um, and I also wanted to just comment, um, as a resident only, has anybody considered moving some of the events off the Talon Green to perhaps try to save some money? Um, it seems like our town has a lot of expenses lately. We have the saltwater contamination. We have a depleted jail that is in dire need of some maintenance. Um, and uh, I see farmers markets are held at uh schools in other towns, and they're able to have them indoors in the wintertime, and and I've attended several of them, and it's really nice actually to be able to have the benefit of going to a farmer's market all year round in your town. Um, Ellington has one, Coventry has one, Summers has one. Um, so Doors has one, and also Mansfield does, and it seems like every town around us has one except for us, and if they can do it, I'm not quite sure why we can't. We have four beautiful schools that are all ADA compliant with ADA compliant parking, sidewalks, facilities, you name it, we got it. And um as far as uh the Harvest Festival, which was initially meant to be a drive-by scarecrow viewing, such as the town of Vernon has at the Strong Farm across the street from Vernon Center Middle School. Um, we have a beautiful park called Crandall Park, and they have electricity and ADA compliant uh facilities, so we don't have to look at a porta potty chained to a tree on the green, and we don't have to look at an orange snow fence. And we also have a beautiful covered picnic area that provides shade. And uh I just think it would be really nice to use some of the uh places that we have that are already ADA compliant, and I'm sure there's even some taxpayers who have never been to any of these schools or even the park. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Okay, without any interest, further interest in speaking, we'll move on to item sixteen on our agenda, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Colleen made the motion to adjourn. Uh, is there any objection to adjournment? Any objection, any objection? Without objection, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and uh, see you next week.